All right, this time I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
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 All right, this time I'd like to apologize for our lateness. We had just a couple of minutes and we needed to finish up an executive session. So again, I apologize that we're a little late. Okay. First, we'll start off. I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Carrie, second. Pam. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll start with public comment. All right, before starting, public comment. I want to remind you as a board, we value your input from the public. Please direct your comments to the Board of Education. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes or less. At the three-minute mark, we'll politely thank you for your comments. Anybody, when you'd like to come up, would please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the board clerk. And are there any community members like to speak at this time? Bob? Is there any board member comments today? Ron?
Yeah, Tim. This is the time of year when Business First begins to release all its rankings on school and they put out all sorts of data about schools. And coming out the other day was the teacher pay rankings. Teacher pay rankings are made up of seven criteria. They look at the salary figures for 5% of the teaching staff. Then they go to 20%, then they go to 50%, then they go to 75%, then they go to 90%. And then they look at the percentage of the budget that's devoted to teachers' salaries and the percentage set aside for retirement benefits. They take those seven factors and they come up with a rating scale. And they rate all the school districts in upstate New York, 431 districts. In the Rochester area, Wayne Central ranked 23 out of the 60-some districts in the Rochester area. Ranking first was Pittsburgh. Ranking second was Hammondport. Then Fairport was fifth. Webster was sixth. Penfield was ninth. Williamson was 26. Pelmac was 46. Marion was 59. And Gannanda was 61st. As you'll recall, a number of years ago, when we negotiated our contract with the Teachers' Association, part of that was to fill in some of the gaps that had occurred in our salary schedule. So this is based upon the 2015-16 school year, but it looks like we're making progress in getting those salaries headed in the right direction. My second comment is, the other day, I had an opportunity to attend the Award for Excellence Luncheon at Middle School. Thirteen students were recognized and are candidates or nominees for the Award of Excellence. That's an award that was started by a science teacher in this district a few, a number of years ago, Ed Carrier, who had a long history in this district. But the reason I mention this is that, as I looked at the 13 students, each and every one of the 13 had a very impressive resume, but 10 of them were girls and only three were boys. And if you go back to when the top 11 were released this year, we have 11 students in this high school who are graduating this year. All 11 of them have an average of 97 or higher and all of them are girls. And if you go back to the induction in the National Honor Society back in November, we inducted a very large percentage of the class of 2018 into the National Honor Society, but I think the ratio was three or four to one, three or four girls to one, to one boy. We have a strategic plan in this district and I would suggest that maybe as part of our strategic plan, that we might want to look at some gender issues around our student achievement, not just the cohorts that we have spelled out in our, in our strategic plan. And then the second thing that I had an opportunity to attend was a Relay for Life. And I'd like to thank Carrie and the Wellness Committee for putting on the Relay for Life last Friday evening. This district has a long history of being proactive in raising money for cancer and I'd just like to congratulate Carrie and her group for all their efforts in that half and for raising money for cancer. And I would also like to ask this question of Channel 8. Where were you? Thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Anyone else? Carla?
I too want to give a shout-out to the Wellness Committee because it was a nice, it was a beautiful evening and just very nice, very poignant. And I want to give Mrs. Boyatzie a shout-out as well for being so candid with her own child's personal story and it was very moving and I'm, I was glad to be a part of that. And I also went to Monday night to hear the presentation that Holly gave for the incoming fifth and sixth graders. And I was very pleased to see the amount of parents there getting their questions answered and, you know, there's still some things that need to be worked out, but it was very nice to see so many parents be inquisitive as to what their fifth and sixth graders are going to be doing next year. So it was very nice to see everyone there.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, this time turn the meeting over to Dr. Kelvin for his superintendent's report.
Good evening, Board and Community. A lot of great things happening, as many of you have already kind of sort to allude to, and we have a lot tonight to share, so I'm going to get, jump right in basically. We want to first start by congratulating one of our students, Charlie Wiggins. Charlie made it to the second round of the Scripps National Spelling Bee in Washington, DC, and just really proud of his accomplishments and for him representing not only Wayne, but this whole sector of New York. So really proud of his accomplishments. Just, just really, really happy to see the outcome. Hopefully in this near future, we'll be able to have him go back and win the next time. So he, he is a winner, did a great job, and we're just really proud of him. Second, want to congratulate our middle school's Award of Excellent winners. So two of our students just last evening were honored, Nicole Clark and Andy Hamel. This award is given to students for academic excellence and community service, so really proud of those two students. And last night at the middle school awards night, we really were able to honor many of our students. Wanted to just make sure we say congratulations to all the students recognized last night at the awards ceremony. Just earlier this week also, we had our high school concert. What a nice evening. The kids, just fantastic. Recently, I was at an event with several of the board members and we were able to hear them. Boy, but I tell you, hearing them in person is, at a full concert, is even better than what we heard at that one presentation. So very proud of our high school chorus. And so just, just really glad. And tonight, we have a special guest with us who is here to celebrate with us more of our students' accomplishments. Senator Pamela Helming, I hope I said that correctly, Helming rather. And this senator is new to us, representing the 54th Senate District. She's the Chair of the Legislative Rural Resource Commission. I had the privilege and honor of meeting her just a couple of months ago in Albany and we're so privileged to have her here tonight, so we'd like to welcome her and she has come tonight to celebrate with our students. So we'd like to welcome her and she can come up to our table and also[516.29][516.29](applause) and also our athletic director, Mr. Carson is also here and they're going to help and celebrate our students. So we'll start with, let them have their time.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. This is one of the best parts of my job and that's to recognize our youth and all of their accomplishments. You know, every day in the media, we're bombarded with all the negatives and it's just so refreshing to be able to be here and to recognize all of the great students who are here and the coaches and all of the adults who help mentor them and help bring them to the success that we're celebrating tonight. And I just want to say, my hats off to all of you for all that you do to, to serve the community and to just create a great school district here. I'm very impressed listening to everything that's going on and all the achievements of all of the students. And although I'm here tonight to recognize two sports teams, I would be more than happy to work with the school district in recognizing all of the students who have achieved something special, whether it's in the music department, theater, whatever department it is, please let me know and we'd be happy to recognize them.
So, as I said, I'm here this evening on behalf of the New York State Senate and also the Assembly to recognize the cheerleading team for their recent state championship award. It's my understanding that, what do I have here? That this is the first time that the cheerleading team has captured the state title or it's first time ever in competing in the New York State Championship and it's the first ever undefeated season in the school's first state championship in any sport. So I'd say congratulations[635.04][635.04](applause) and if it's okay, I'd like to read the resolution. Okay? So again, this is on behalf of the New York State Senate and the New York State Assembly. It's congratulating the Wayne Central Varsity Cheerleading Team and Coach Stephanie Lee upon the occasion of capturing the 2017 New York State Public High School Athletic Association Division II Large Championship. Whereas individual and team championships are highly sought after in high school sports, this legislative body commends rare athletic achievements and pays special recognition to those who pursue such excellence and become examples for the youth of this great empire state. And whereas athletic competition helps to enhance both the moral and the physical development of young athletes, preparing them for the future by instilling in them the importance of teamwork, encouraging a standard of healthy living and developing a sense of fair play in competition. And whereas this legislative body is justly proud to congratulate the Wayne Central Varsity Cheerleading Team and Coach Stephanie Lee upon the occasion of capturing the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Division II Large Championship on Saturday, March 4th, 2017, at the SRC Arena and Event Center at Anandaga Community College. And whereas after the preliminary round, Wayne Central was ranked fourth place out of eight teams, which advanced the Eagles to the finals. After performing a nearly perfect routine, Wayne Central was named the New York State Champions, increasing its scores from preliminaries to finals by almost 30 points. And whereas this was the first time the Wayne Central Varsity Cheerleading Team has ever competed at the New York State Championships, the team took home the state title and kept its first ever undefeated season with the school's first state championship in any sport. And whereas proudly donning the school's colors of navy blue and gold, family, friends, and the community at large loyally and enthusiastically supported the Eagles throughout their journey as they ended their season with an impressive overall record. And whereas in a sport such as cheerleading, which demands athletic prowess, speed and agility, head coach Stephanie Lee and her expert coaching staff worked hard to hone the skills of this championship team, teaching these outstanding athletes lessons which will prove invaluable both on and off the field. And whereas Coach Stephanie Lee and all of the outstanding athletes on the Wayne Central Varsity Cheerleading Team have clearly utilized dedication, determination, and teamwork, improving a lasting contribution to the spirit of excellence, which is a tradition of their school. Now therefore be it resolved that this legislative body pause in its deliberations to congratulate the members of the Wayne Central Varsity Cheerleading Team. Would it be okay if they came forward as I pronounce it?[826.06][826.06](applause) Jacqueline Arnold, Jessica Arnold, Caitlin Kakamacy, I'm sorry if I mispronounced, help me out. Gracie Castleberry, Sarah, Sarah, help me pronounce. Tula. Brooke Forrest, Caitlin Gerard, Samantha Hall, Casey
Jerzek.
Victoria Maestrock, Taylor
Mottler.
Mottler. Olivia Rumpen, no, Olivia Rowan. Rowan. Bailey Rowan, Alyssa Roselli, Rachel Schofield, Samantha Sherlock, Casey Stambler, Carol Wickham-Busher, and Alyssa Witt. And head coach Stephanie Lee on their outstanding season in 2017 New York State Public High School Athletic Association Division II Large Championship. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution subsequently engrossed to be transmitted to the members of the Wayne Central Varsity Cheerleading Team, head coach Stephanie Lee, athletic trainer Elizabeth Bradshaw, and athletic director Tony Carson. Thank you. This was adopted and sent out on April 26, 2017. Congratulations to all of you.[918.12][918.12](applause)
(inaudible)
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 Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
I got to just say quickly that I have two children and a son-in-law and they're all involved and I think we covered every single sport there is. My daughter, who went on to play Division One Lacrosse, she was a high school cheerleader on top of everything. And I don't mean this to offend the basketball team, I think, but I think cheerleading is one of the toughest sports. You have to work so hard and you have to look good during
(shouting)
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 I think she wants you to fix your hair, guys.[1065.08][1065.08](laughing)
Next up, it's my honor and privilege to honor the boys' basketball team for winning Section Five Championships. And for the boys' basketball team and their coaches, I have a proclamation which I'd like to read. Is that okay? Okay. Whereas individual and team championships are highly sought after in high school sports, New York State Senator Pamela A. Helming commends athletic achievements and pays special recognition to those who pursue such excellence and become examples for the youth of this great empire state. And whereas athletic competition helps to enhance both the moral and physical development of young athletes, preparing them for the future by instilling in them the importance of teamwork, encouraging a standard of healthy living, and developing a sense of fair play. And whereas Senator Pamela A. Helming is justly proud to congratulate the Wayne Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team and Coach Bill Thompson upon the occasion of capturing the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Section Five Class A2 Championship on Saturday, March 4th, 2017. And whereas to praise and applause, whereas to the praise and applause of their excited fans proudly displaying the school colors of navy and gold, the Eagles defeated the Wilson Magnet Wildcats in a 50-43 victory, becoming the first boys' basketball team in school history to hoist a sectional trophy. And whereas in a sport such as basketball, which demands athletic, can't say that word, prowess, speed and agility, head coach Bill Thompson and his expert coaching staff worked hard to hone the skills of his championship team, teaching lessons which will prove invaluable both on and off the field. And whereas Coach Bill Thompson and all the outstanding athletes on the Wayne Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team have clearly utilized dedication, determination, and teamwork in providing a lasting contribution to the spirit of excellence, which is a tradition of their school. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Senator Pamela A. Helming, congratulate the Wayne Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team on an outstanding season in winning the school's first ever Section Five Basketball Championship. And be it further resolved that copies of this resolution be presented to the Wayne Central Boys Varsity Basketball Team, head coach Bill Thompson, and assistant Tom Carmichael. Congratulations.[1227.01][1227.01](applause) Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd just quickly recognize the boys here. We have Jake Battle, Nick Carmichael, Thomas Bull, Logan Blankenberg, Billy Thompson, Nate Metrowski, Max LaRocca, Logan Hargado, Tanner Clark, Bailey Madison, Brandon Noack, Braden Zanovic, Gavin Lennox, Coach Tom Carmichael, and Coach Billy Thompson.
And you, you might need to do a photo and I have a proclamation. (inaudible)
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 Thanks for coming. Girls, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
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 Dr. Kelvin, I guess I won't have to talk about the transition committee tonight because they're here, some of them, so, thanks for coming.
Okay, Board. All right. So, um, we're going to transition now, just a little bit, and we're going to just move things around a little bit on the superintendent's report tonight. We're going to go ahead and begin our discussion tonight about our strategic plan. As you know, last year, we pulled together nearly 40 stakeholders from across the district and we created a multi-strategic plan. And recently, on April 25th, that committee reconvened and we have a representative from the, a representative group today from that committee and we just want to kind of share with you, with you what occurred this year when we came back. We wanted to make sure that we kept our eyes on that plan and so we want to share with you the progress tonight. So we brought some folks together tonight from all across the district to talk a little bit about our strategic plan. Okay, so with that said, we're going to start off with Mr. Binzek, who will lead us in the conversation. I'm going to pull this microphone, Jeff, out, is that okay? It's not going to come out. I'm going to just[1530.12][1530.12](laughing)
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mark Binzek. I am an eighth-grade social studies teacher and I'm just going to kind of get things started here. So we did meet on April 25th, kind of reconvened and got back together to kind of just go over progress made with our strategic plan. We met over at Casey Park, had a delicious lunch and a lot of great discussion about where we are and where we want to be as a district. Our goals for that day were to just review our plan, look at what progress we've made since the plan was implemented at the beginning of the school year, and then also to discuss and consider where we wanted to move next. Sean Brady was back as our facilitator. He led us in our meetings last year and did a wonderful job again, using some of the tools in terms of pointing together dialogue and consensus. We did some of the electronic voting again, lots of different discussion and mixing up the groups. So we began reviewing the process by looking at what were our immediate priorities, what did we want to focus on short-term, looking at what new opportunities we would want to pursue and go after, given the changes that are going to be happening with the transition, and then the foundational strategies that would want to be in place or have in place to, to make those things come, come to fruition. We also reviewed, reviewed our instructional targets and had some, some new data that we could look at to see where we were in terms of meeting those targets and just have that sense of where we were going to be kind of taking off from again for next year. Some of the work we did, you're going to see in the slides and in the presentation, when we kind of broke into different groups, so I just wanted to highlight a few of the things we discussed in terms of progress we've made, things that were happening in the district that are related to the strategic plan. The development of the K-12 Tech Plan that is going to be rolled out here before the end of the school year, scope and sequence for, for K-12 expectations for all of our students in the area of technology and use of technology instructionally. We also discussed how math curriculum is being aligned through the use of the Atlas software. One of our goals was to provide more extracurricular opportunities. We all know that the Unified Basketball Team had its first season. I got a chance to go to a game. It was a very great opportunity to see our students getting involved and having a lot of fun and I think that was a wonderful thing that we, we brought in. So I'm glad to see that's going to be part of it. Couple other groups discussed our UPK and K-screening. That was a really big part of our strategic plan and how a program had been adopted. I'm not an expert on a Dial Four screening through Peabody. Community Reads Program is going to be instituted next year at the primary level, so we're going to have community members. That was another part of our strategic plan, to get community members involved and we'll have that with our reading program. Some of the other groups discussed, you know, that the strategic plan has given us a common language within the district, so you can have understandings and have conversations with people who are at different instructional levels, different areas of the district and tie it all together. We looked at enrichment opportunities and so I know the district was looking at and I believe is adding another enrichment coordinator to, to provide more opportunities and we focused again on wanting to do that at all levels, so that opportunity should be happening. And then the long-term facilities plans, knowing with our transition and our needs changing, the district has moved it forward and is continuing to look at that. And certainly, district-wide curriculum continues to be a focus in, in making sure we have the common experience for all our students.
So, the next few slides, we're going to review what our immediate priorities are, what our new opportunities are, and what our strategies are that we just don't want to lose. Those are foundational strategies. So, I believe that the important words in this slide are apply, focus, resource, and attention. So, anything in the first bullet where we would implement supportive structures and resources, anything that we can do to help our community members take resources, anything that we can do to help our community members take a burden off of their children, so that learning is the thing that they really need to focus on, is something we're looking to make a priority. The next bullet talks about the GNAE contingency plans. We have that right now, but we really need to be ready in case that goes away, and we don't wanna lose any of our great programs and great curriculum and content that we have in our school now. We are collaborating with other buildings. We all have so much to offer each other, and we don't know nearly what is all going on in each building, so it's really important that we become cohesive in that. And then developing a comprehensive plan to promote early literacy birth rate to five, birth to age five. Again, if we can help our community members have their children be more ready when they come to school, then that starts them off on a really strong foot right from the beginning. The new opportunities that we're looking to plan and implement, the first bullet talks about the K to eight grade level benchmarks for the Twenty-First Century learners, and aligning these benchmarks gets them ready, gets them ready to go out and do what they will do to make their mark on the world and not have them be at a disadvantage. Developing long-term plan then for the facilities, we would obviously need to start planning and implementing things along those lines to make sure that we can support those Twenty-First Century skills. And the comprehensive instructional technology plan, which I believe you'll hear more about in a little bit, along with the programs and the curriculums and content we have here, it's important that we start right from K and all the right, all the way right up until graduation, assessing and teaching the technology skills in addition to the content. So our foundational strategies are that we're going to continue to provide curriculum, curriculum that is rigorous and enrichment opportunities for kids, which may look different, different groups of children may be receiving different types of enrichment opportunities, continue to build strong relationships with people who are stakeholders in this community. We have strong parent groups already, we have great relationships with businesses and colleges and, and other schools in the area, so we can all offer each other so much. And then to explore and improve our means of communication, positive relationships need good communication, so we're exploring ways to be able to continue to do that.
Hi, thank you. I'm Kim Schultz, ELA Coordinator. We looked at our 2016-17 instructional targets. In 2016, the team created instructional targets for our students based on New York State ELA and math assessments and exams. After reviewing the foundational data that the state provided with the district in the fall of this year, the team agreed that we should keep the targets where they have been
This, this slide shows the targets that were set. In an earlier board meeting, it was discussed by the board the importance of setting local targets of things that we value. I think it was Tim who kinda references, the strategic plan actually does that. And you can see that's kinda reflected in, in our focus on trying to help more kids achieve college-level courses and college credits while they're in high school, as well as having advanced diploma and college and career-ready targets. And I think tonight we heard that we might wanna look at a couple of other areas, disaggregate it a couple of other ways, and we're, of course, we're always open to that. So implementing supportive structures is really important to help us assure that all kids can achieve. One of the ways that we took steps towards that is really beefing up our response to intervention process in adopting the software, the RTIM direct software, which allows us to track and monitor student progress and interventions K through twelve in, in one place, so we can look back over the years to see what's been done and what new things we might need to do to help kids keep pace with their peers.
One of the other areas that was certainly outlined in the plan was that we, as you heard earlier, that we put into place some contingency plans in case things really started to go a different way around GNAE and the state, the tax piece that we're receiving right now. And this year, as you know, we've done a number of efficiency studies, which are designed to really help us to address budget concerns, efficiencies, and soon we'll be working together around our facilities as well. So, great progress made this year in terms of addressing that particular piece.
In terms of collaborating to create an aligned and consistent district-wide curriculum, we've made great progress toward that this year, as was mentioned by Mr. Binzek in, in the opening. One of the things that I would highlight is that our seven-twelve math department, as well as our ELA and social studies, but in particular our math department are just about ready to go live with their curriculum, which would mean that parents would be able to see the units when they're being taught and some of the key ideas and understandings in each of those units. So we have made some great progress in that regard.
So, boy, do you remember, we talked in the past about our curriculum, making sure it was unified, that it was accessible to parents, so we're there now in terms of the math. Also in terms of the ELA, we now have a ELA program that will be in place for all of our elementary students, and that's because of the, and math. We have a math program and ELA program, and we're working now on the science and social studies piece. So, great progress made because of the work that Joe and his team have been putting together.
We did have a subcommittee that focused on K readiness and early literacy skills, and I think Mark outlined that a little bit earlier, and so I'm just gonna highlight some of the work of that committee this year with our focus. So we collaborated, collaborated with many districts, and we researched best practices. And so we did adopt the Dial Four, which is our K readiness tool, and we used it during screening this year. So we did adopt that, and it really assesses our students in movement, concepts, language, their self-help skills, and their social-emotional skills. But with that, it's a standardized nationally-normed assessment, so what that provides feedback with is how, for example, a child of four years, eight months compares to other children across the nation at the same age. So it does give us some important data. It really highlights the strengths and the weaknesses of kids, so we can best serve them and place them. We also took a look at a program called the Community Reads Program, and we have adopted that program, and it will be implemented next year, and that means all of our K students will have a community reader come in one time each week and really develop that love and enthusiasm for literature and learning. And with that comes some family fun literacy nights, and that really promotes not just the K student, but their siblings, younger and older siblings, and family members, and it just models that read aloud process, again, that enthusiasm and love for literature. In addition to that, we did have Catholic charities. It's called the Thriving Family Program, and it's part of a grant fund, and that allows some parent sessions for our families, so we did have families participating in that. So those were some of our focus areas that we're really excited about to, again, promote those early literacy and K readiness skills.
Hi. I just wanted to add a little bit of detail to the define and updating our K-8 curriculum with Twenty-First Century Skills. We designed some professional development for the staff for the four Cs, which are the Twenty-First Century Skills: Communication, Collaboration, Creativity, and Critical Thinking. And so we had great conversations around those during the Professional Development Day, and we wanted to make sure that teachers had it forefront in their minds to keep those skills in their everyday lesson plans, as well as embedded into the curriculum that Joe was talking about earlier that we're gonna go live with in Atlas, so that's what we're working on there.
One of the other things that was a new opportunity for us that we wanted to begin to talk about and discuss was really our facilities. And we spent some time, there's a subcommittee that was put together to, to talk about our facilities and next steps. And one of the things that we needed to do, we knew this year, was to first find an architect, which we have found, and then two, begin to talk about what are areas that we know we need renovation in. So we know that we have some brick and mortar things that we definitely need to think about in the near future. And there are some instructional kinds of things that we need to do in some of our areas around, several of our schools, that we also need to do some work on. So, this subcommittee has spent a little time talking through some ideas and talking through next steps, and in the next school year, we'll be back to talk about where do we go next, because we certainly wanna make sure that our facilities are Twenty-First Century-ready to support the needs of all of our students.
Creating a comprehensive, comprehensive instructional technology plan, including a K-12 scope and sequence, is really work that Barb Hield has led with Technology Committee, and in the next couple of slides, she's gonna talk a lot more about that.
Hi. So the Technology Committee, you can see the people's names up on the screen, and Amy Sullivan, Amber Whitney, Carrie Eldred, Kathy Erz, Nancy Frederis, Brittany Pulsini, Josh Harris, and Priscilla Bijan. The Technology Committee by nature is already made up of representatives across the district and across grade levels. So this year, with the charge from the Strategic Planning Committee, they made the, the technology scope and sequence the focus of their work this year. And I believe you each have a copy of what they were able to produce by the end of the year. We're quite proud of it. They really did some deep digging, and if you could go to the next slide, thanks, Joe. Really, the task at hand for us was to marry, thanks, Joe, the ISTI, which is the International Society, Society for Technology and Education, their standards, along with the state standards for content, along with good teaching practices in pedagogy and content. And we were able to put all of those things together, and if you are to go to the second or third page, you can see the grid or the roadmap. And really, our, our focus was to create a resource or a tool for teachers to use while they're lesson planning, in their, in their planning. To start with, the skills that each student should have at each grade level, at the kindergarten level, where should they be with specific skills? Should we be introducing it to them? Should we reinforce it? Should they be at the mastery level? Or should we just be exposing students to those? And this is, you know, I'm not sure what else to say, more than, here it is. It was, you know, it was a lot of work.
Cindy and I are fighting over the microphone. That was a lot of work, and I just congratulate Barb and her team on that. It's, it's leading not only our school, but in our region, regionally. People are looking at what's, what are, what we are accomplishing with our technology scope and sequence, so kudos to that. Providing a rigorous curriculum and enrichment opportunities for all students, this one, we, we spent a lot of time talking about it, enrichment, what it is, what different forms it could take, you know, discussing how it can occur in the classroom and what it looks like when we pull students out of the classroom. One of the ways that we made an obvious commitment to this is that we are adding a second enrichment coordinator to work with Susan Mack this year. As a matter of fact, we've posted that position, had a lot of interest from very strong teachers, and we'll be figuring out which one will take on that second role next week. Very excited about that. We wanna continue to build strong partnerships with parents, businesses, colleges, and other schools. We know that, you know, we know that schools are a reflection of their community, and it's important to get in partnership with our community assets. Pam spoke about the Community Reads Program. It's one way to get the community into our schools. You also know that our, many of our senior projects involve reaching out to the community as well as our internship program, getting students and work-based experiences outside in our community. So we wanna continue with that work and continue to find ways to partner with, with all of our community members.
This slide you've seen before, because these were the ones that we came up with initially, because we call them foundational strategies, they're things that we thought we were fairly well working on, and the last point here, exploring and improving all effective means of internal and external communication, we felt was a relative strength of the district. And so, the entire administrative staff and everybody in the buildings continue to use all the possible means available to communicate with each other and to communicate with all of our, can't think of the right word, all of the people involved, all the stakeholders, not just parents and students, but everybody in the community too. So, going on, we spent a lot of time that day talking about what had happened last year, and I hope that you're as impressed as I was that day, and as I am just sitting here listening to all the things that have happened in the past year. So now we wanna move forward. We decided to keep our instructional targets as-is, because it had only been a year that we had established, for which we had established those targets, we said, let's keep them where they are, see how we do, and again, you know, as, as we've got another year under our belt, we'll revisit those and look at them again. Then we looked at how to revise our immediate priorities, new opportunities, and foundational strategies. So the next slide shows you where the immediate priorities are. This is what you'll be hearing a lot about this coming year. So, to apply significant focus, resource, and attention. The first you've seen before, to develop and implement a plan to provide the supportive structures and resources to improve the achievement of our economically disadvantaged students and students with disabilities. Our goal, my goal as a teacher has always been, our goal as a district is to educate all of our students to the best of their ability, to prepare them for living in the Twenty-First Century. And so we're going to focus on those particular students to give them the advantage and, and the boost that they need. And the next, to collaborate, to create a line and implement consistent district-wide curriculum aligned to Twenty-First Century skills. I think Joe and Lisa talked about that, and that will continue. To develop a vision and long-term plan to upgrade the facilities to meet the needs of the Twentieth Century, Twenty-First Century learner, Dr. Calvin mentioned that, and talked about how there is a subcommittee, an architect, and they're looking into that. And lastly, to implement the comprehensive instructional technology plan that Barb and her team put together, including their scope and sequence. And I know the teachers are anxious to see this. We've heard about bits and pieces of it from different members of the committee, and think that this will be a good step for all of us to be able to be consistent with what we're teaching across the board, to be able to integrate some of those skills into science and social studies and the things that we're doing in the classroom. So, we're pretty anxious to hear more about that and to get that in place. The same thing with all of the curriculum that Joe and his team and all of the people who have been looking at different areas or subjects, as we could call them, ELA, math, all of those things. It's gonna be great to have available to all of us, the knowledge of the curriculum from kindergarten through twelfth grade. It makes a big difference to know what came before and what's coming afterwards, what I'm preparing kids for in fourth grade and what the fourth grade teachers are doing, what Mark wants them to know when they get to middle school in social studies. So, I just think that's a wonderful priority that we've, we're focusing on there. And then the next slide talks about a priority beyond that, to increase focus, resource, and attention, and that's the enrichment that was spoken about earlier. And I think we're excited about that too, to know that we have, we'll have another person on board, and so someone else's expertise to draw on, and more ways to enrich all of our kids all the way up through.
And then those foundational things, things that we wanna continue to maintain, our focus on, and resources and attention on, we'll continue, as we, as we've talked about already, to implement plans to address our budget, our operations, our facilities, and our programs. And then also, as Pam has already talked about, we'll continue to work on that literacy skill from birth to age five. We'll continue to improve all of our means of communications, and we'll continue to build those partnerships within the community. Kindergarten readiness is gonna be really important to us.
So we're excited. Just a couple weeks ago, we had our K screening, and so all of our teachers were trained with the Dial Four. Our OTPT staff was involved, as well as our speech and language teachers. So we did implement that. We'll be sending out the reports to our parents next week, and we're just really excited that this will establish a baseline for our data, and we can work with our UPK programs based on that data to help tie that, tie any of the gaps, close any of the gaps with those readiness skills. And also, the sub- And also, the subcommittee developed a great calendar, and it's a countdown from now until the start of school in September, and it is something that they can do with their child each day to promote those readiness skills. So, again, it was a lightweight, but it is a way that parents can walk away and feel supported and engage their children to help develop those skills. So, that was another area. So, we look forward to gathering that baseline data and then reporting out next year some of our targets and where we want to move our kids from there.
So, Board, just kind of almost summing up here. So, we've done a lot of different things this year. We started a year ago with creating the strategic plan. And we said we'd come back every year and look at how it's going, and if we need to change some things, we would change some things. In our immediate plans last year, we wanted to really address efficiency concerns. We're now moving from that into more concerns around our kids and our instruction and our curriculum, so things are shifting a little bit. And as we have gone through this year, we really worked hard. So, now we have even more curriculum that's aligned. We have reading and math programs that are now coming into place for kids, everybody on the same page. You heard some things around our kids up to age five. We want to make sure the kids are ready. We've put in new programs like the Dial and different kindergarten or pre-K indicators. We've put in a new technology scope and sequence, and we're really looking out at facilities. And as we've kind of really done all this work, we wanted to make sure that we were all moving together as a team. And one of the great things about this whole project is that we really took a look at, are we all on the same page as well? The graphic that you see there at the top, it kind of actually is a graphic that we've used to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, you see two boxes to the right. The top box is our things that, if you see, it's empty right now at the top to the right. If you saw, if you see any plot or dots, and I'll show you this on the next screen, in that area, those are areas that are immediately important to us that we want to put immediate attention on. Underneath that are areas that are high-risk, but also, at the bottom of that, some long-term kind of opportunities. To the left, at the very top, any plot that you'll see on the next screen, at the top, are critical strategies, things that we really want to keep a lot of focus on. And then, underneath it, things that we don't need as much attention on, because too much attention would make, kind of be like overkill, basically. So, just kind of want to explain that. So, on the next screen, now you can see all the different things that we really looked at. So, we looked at curriculum, communication. These are all things that we talked about in our first time together a year ago. Partnering with others, our efficiency plans, enrichment, facilities, K readiness, students with disabilities, economic, students who are struggling because of economic disability and/or disabilities, and then, technology. So, each of these areas were plotted out, and if you look again at that ideal zone, if you go back for a moment, so, anything over in the ideal zone are things that we kind of want to think about. So, if you look at that top-left section, number one, curriculum was one of the things that we kind of really, is a critical strategy. Number eight is making sure we keep our eyes on and work with our students with disabilities and who are economically disadvantaged. Number seven is K readiness. And number four is our efficiency. So, those will be real big priorities as we move forward next year. At the lower, underneath that, that area, you see number nine, technology. So, we have a scope and sequence, so we want to keep our eyes on it, don't want it to go away. And then, number two, all the way down at the bottom, communication, and then, number three, partnership. So, we want to keep our eyes on communication, but a year ago, we saw communication as even more of a priority. Now, after going through this year, the team said, we are communicating, and everyone's getting closer on the same page with each other. So, it's not as big of a piece there. And our partnerships, we've got great partnerships. So, we're going to spend a lot more time on those other areas, basically. And then, the new piece that's really important, the immediate piece, is number six, and that's really looking at our facilities. Our team overwhelmingly, all the stakeholders said, we really want to spend a lot of time next year thinking about the facilities. And so, we'll do that on next year, okay? And then, consensus was also important.
As Dr. Calvin said, it was very important that the entire team felt like they were working together and were in agreement and were able to support the plan. And the team did reach consensus of support for the plan. Eight of our members voted that they had strong support for the plan. Ten members voted that they did support the plan, and four voted that they can live with the plan and that they do publicly support the plan. But in the end, no members voted that, they said, none of them said that they still had questions or that they could not support our final strategic plan.
So, with that said, a lot of support for the plan in terms of consensus. And then, we'll just end with overall impressions. Any, anyone like to share their overall impressions around the process?
I already did. I said, I think, I think the work we did was pretty impressive. I was glad to be part of it. And I think that I feel good about the different groups of people working together to come up with a plan for our school district.
I kind of echo that. I think being able to sit and talk and dialogue with all the different stakeholders, community members, board members, staff from the different levels, sometimes when you're in the middle of your school year, it can be, you get pretty isolated, you're pretty focused on your particular area. So, it's nice to hear what community members and staff members have to say about where the district is and where they want that district to go. So, and lunch was great.
I just, I was new to the committee this year, and I hadn't worked with Mr. Brady before, and it was amazing the way that he, coming from outside, was able to keep us focused and keep us moving forward. We didn't get stuck, as has happened to me in a few meetings in the past. And you were just all working towards the same goal. So, it was really, really nice to have Mr. Brady here.
I would like to say that one of the things that I thought was very beneficial was that, as Mark, I think, just mentioned, meeting with all the people from different buildings. We are very isolated, so we don't all know what each other are doing. So, just having the opportunity to say, do you think enrichment's important in your building? Yes, so do we. Okay, so that's going to look differently, just for one example, but it's important for all of us, and learning about the K ready and some things that, being here in the high school, I had no idea was happening in other buildings, was very, very educational for me, and I thought that was great.
I'll just comment, I think this has been a tremendous roadmap for the district. It's easy when we work in a complex business such as schools, where it's with kids and their lives every day, to be sidetracked by the things that come at you each day. But the strategic plan really kept us very dedicated and made us establish priorities, and I'm just really pleased with the work and impressed with everybody combining their efforts and their skills and their abilities together to benefit our kids.
I'll add to that now. I was proud to be a member of this team, narrowing down the focus on what's our priorities. It really helps the board know where we should put our focus as far as budget and attention and what, you know, policies need to be changed, maybe to come up with those things that will help the kids the most. It was a true collaboration, you know, to have all the community members and people there. So, you know, we're listening to people that are representing the community to give us those things to base our decisions on, and I think that's important. You know, looking at the graph there showed, and Sean Brady, who was a great facilitator, he commented on, some districts only did one, two, three, four thing, targets, and we had nine, and we made great strides on all of them. He was really impressed with that. And with all we were going through, it was, says a lot for the people that are working on the subcommittees and the whole district itself, is working together to get what's best for the kids. So, I was proud to be on that team. Thank you. I bring it up every chance I can.
And I would echo Tim. With as busy of a year as we had last year, to stay focused and for all these people to continue the great work that we were able to do and to accomplish, you know, I really appreciate, you know, all of your hard work and all of your efforts. And it really, I have to say, I'm very proud to have the opportunity to work with all of you and the other 30 people, and to see the outcome just a year later is really great. So, I want to thank you all, honestly. I told you all thank you today, I think I did. And I really appreciate all of your work, really fantastic. Thank you so much for your time and your efforts on behalf of the district. Thank you.
I just want to say that I think one of the most important things with the strategic plan is the community member involvement, because they're out there, they're not in the schools that often, except maybe Senior Project Day, to see what actually, the changes that we have to make, the mandates that come through, the issues that we deal with and how we put it all together in a plan and work together to the benefit of all of our students is, I think, one of the, we can all work together and come up with a plan. But to let the community be in on it, I think has been one of the most beneficial things of having the strategic plan, and I just want to thank you all. I know how difficult this work is, a lot of agreeing to disagree and, you know, this, that, and finding out more about each other and what you're doing. But to work and come together as a group is a really, you're to be very well thanked, and I appreciate it, and I know the rest of my board does too. So, thank you.
I just have a couple of questions for some clarification. Pam, you had mentioned the community learner, reader learners. Is it going to be one-on-one with each child, or will it be kind of like smaller?
For a classroom.
Okay. Oh, okay. And then, under the math curriculum, I'm going to guess it's either Joe or Kasha on this one, with the new 712 coming, you know, program starting to come, will there be opportunities within this new program for either advancement or a lot more rigor for maybe students who want that, or are we not there yet, or?
So, right now, what we're talking about is, at K5, we have adopted a math program called expressions. At 712, we have really dug into the Atlas program, which is our curriculum mapping tool, and we use what's called understanding by design to write our curriculum. So, we have been documenting a lot of what we already do in terms of what are our objectives, essential questions, and joint understandings, our assessments, at each grade level, and then throughout the year, unit by unit by unit. We are looking at a 6-8 curricular program. However, acceleration will go back to occurring in 7th grade as it has in the past. That doesn't change how fast kids can accelerate. Whether we begin earlier or not, at 8th grade, they're taking algebra, they're one year ahead. So, there's no disadvantage to that. Whatever we do in 6th grade, we want to include differentiation and enrichment in that program. One of the things we talked about as a committee is that enrichment is not Susan Mack. Susan Mack provides enrichment opportunities, but it's our expectation that enrichment happens every day in every classroom. And in our curriculum mapping tool, under the lesson design template, we have a section called differentiation and enrichment, so that we're actually active, I think Kasha spoke to that, we're actually thinking about how do we differentiate our lessons so that all kids can benefit at their level.
And then, my last question. Barb, thank you so much for just this handout. I haven't had a chance to fully read through it. With the way kind of technology is changing, you know, it's obviously not just the ways we learn in the classroom, just going to a computer lab all the time. It's so hands-on with just different subjects. Are we looking with the kids, I know we've talked about it over the years, either Chromebooks or iPads at a younger age and really starting to implement that within all subject areas? Will that kind of start to slowly kind of take, not necessarily take the place of just like a computer class or a computer lab, but because it's going to be integrated more fully, is that kind of the plan that we're looking to go towards, or? And how young are we looking to start that?
That's exactly what that is, and this is the roadmap that'll take us there, and then, from here, we'll provide the resources to match that. Right now, we're looking at iPads at the primary level, and then Chromebooks from grades three all the way up to 12th grade, and moving more and more towards the one-on-one environment.
Thank you guys so much, much appreciated.
As we get the baseline data for the pre-K, will we disaggregate that by the provider, by the program the kids are coming from?
We are able to do that, yes. So, the Dial Four will be administered in the fall for the first time with our UPK students as a pre-assessment, and then it will be administered during our K screening as a post-assessment, and that does break it down per site. So, it will give us some really good information to work with our UPK folks, yeah.
Pam, you probably have looked at the data, and are most of our students who are incoming Ks have, do you happen to know like, however many, how many are coming, like 130 or 141?
141.
141. Have most of them been to some type of pre-educational kindergarten level?
Yes, most have. I'm just printing reports, and as I said, we're going to put those in the mail on Monday. So, we'll provide a summary of what that data looks like. So, we're just compiling all that together, but yes, most students have had exposure to some type of preschool program.
I was always amazed when I worked in my kids' kindergarten class, you know, I, until I came to work in education and actually worked in their classroom, I thought, you know, the highs and the lows had a gap like this. And then, I worked in their classroom and realized the gap was like this. And to have kids who had never seen a pair of scissors or, you know, couldn't color, couldn't write their name, didn't know letters, and then other kids who were reading trade books that were second grade level, it really is an eye-opener, and especially with the standards today. People do not understand what is expected of our kindergartners. And as you know, I work in a district, they just voted down full-day K, and we are seeing in that district the effects of not having full-day K, that the kids who are in a placement of full-day K, the kids who are in a half-day, when they go to first grade, that gap is like this now, instead of just being in kindergarten.
So, Board, just as a follow-up, you have a copy of the new strategic, the updated, revised version of the strategic plan. This is also on our webpage, and when we come back in the fall, we will be sharing even more about this with our staff, with our community. And I also wanted to mention, we do have several of our community members also on this team. We have several parents who couldn't be here tonight, but several have really been supporting us and helping us for the last two years now. So, with that said, to be continued. And again, thank you all. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you for your time. Thank you so much. Thank you. Transition now, talk a little bit about our transition.
All right, we'll take a quick second. For all the students, if you'd like to go home, I know you've got lots of homework and study to do, so if you'd like this, to sign your papers, you can bring them up now. Take a quick break then for that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So, okay. Sure, that's, is it on there? Okay, very good. All right. So, we're going to now just transition here to talk a little bit about our transition report. Just want to give you some updates as to where we're at on a number of things that we're working on. So, recently, we met with the transition full committee and also subcommittees met. I met with the parent committee, subcommittee rather, and we talked about a number of things. One of the, the things that was discussed was the playground. So, we had some parents in our subcommittee who talked about, you know, do we need a playground still or some equipment over at the middle school? So, they had asked if I would complete a thorough formal survey of the kids. So, I did an informal one originally, and we decided, sure, let's go back and do a formal one, just to kind of make sure that everyone is good. So, we did an inform, a formal survey. The principals did one in their schools. And the kids told us a couple of things. So, they told us that they definitely want to do the four-square, that's at the top of their list. And then, we did have quite a few kids who came back and said, I would actually, you know, maybe not the full playground, but I'd like to do some, you know, playground stuff like swings. We have some kids who do like swings. And then, we had kids who said, you know, boy, if there's some, you know, basketball we can do. And the, the one that was really a great one, a kid said, what if you could put a, a skate, a skating, yeah, yeah, a little skate park back there? And nice, but those do come with insurance things, so we have to be careful with the skate park. But the one thing that the survey did show us, that we do know, we have some kids who still like to be on the swings and things. So, what we'd like to do is, just want to let you know, we're going to get a couple swings, not too expensive, basically, put a couple swings in the back of the, the middle school to accommodate those kids. We, we have kids who are still, you know, eleven years old, you know, twelve years old. So, we'd like to, that survey was a great idea. We got it done, and we'd like to do that. So, just want to kind of let you make sure that you're aware of that. Also, in talking with the parent group, they were great. So, we have one parent, Mrs. Odell, who's been doing a Pimp Pal project, and it's been really good. So, we've, we've gotten some kids involved in Pimp Pal, meeting Pimp Pals, and the principals have been arranging for lunches with those kids. But the parents have shared with me, they'd like to do more over the summer, they like to have like a little picnic on their own, helping to support kids, and they asked if we could help them. And we, we were able to talk and said, yes. So, we're going to have a meeting on Monday with a group of parents. And we have a group that really want to continue to run this project, there's about four or five of them will be getting together. And we're going to let, we're going to kind of let them run that, but yet be there to support and to help as we, as they continue to move through the Pimp Pal piece. They like to basically do a picnic and help kids over the summer meet each other. So, we're going to see what we can do to help and support them.
Question.
We, sure.
The kids with the swings. They mentioned basketball, and they mentioned four-square. So, four-square, you need an asphalt area.
We have an area.
And we can, we don't have to do anything, just mark it off.
Sure. We have basketball hoops inside of the building that would be able to help us with the basketball.
Okay. And I didn't know, put one outside at all at some point in the future, maybe, so let's just look at it. Seems we just added a sectional basketball team, we want to continue that, so it'll be good.
Just, just one other clarification. We haven't determined the location yet of the, the equipment over there. We've got a consultant coming in next week to help us look at that. We're not sure exactly, we've got to make sure the location fits all the, you know, safety and space and requirements and whatnot. So, you know, we haven't quite gotten that far with that piece yet.
Do we use that whole back parking lot? Is that all taken up?
Um, it will be, it will be next year, but we are using the space right across from the central store's doorway because the parking lot actually goes further east there. And that's where we're going to do the four-square, we'll comb that off and paint the lines there, so they'll have a, a blacktop area to do the four-square.
And also, thanks for bringing that up. We, we also have at OP, so we're going to have some, some additional kids per grade level because we have a couple more sections we'll bring in at each grade level. And to accommodate the additional kids coming in and being out at recess, we're going to also buy a couple more furniture pieces for that playground as well. Just so that when kids go outside, if there are twenty or thirty more kids, everybody's not lined up trying to get on the swings all at once, or whatever's happening, it'll be a couple more pieces out there for the kids, basically. Okay? No, we, we tried to go up and we did, we did do a survey to see if we could take, just lift up the playground there and bring it down. So, those pieces, some of them are twenty years old or more. And when we tried to see if we can pull them up, some of it would actually disintegrate. Some of it's in cement, some of it's, you know, older bolts. So, it just would not make sense to even try to do that. We'd break it before we could even get down. So, it was easier just to go ahead and buy a couple extra pieces, basically. All right. Also, I want to let you know, we, as mentioned earlier, we did host our, our last of, of parent information night. So, we had all the grade levels over the last couple of weeks that met with parents. The fifth, fifth and sixth grade parent information night was recently held, just, just this past week. Lots of questions, lots of folks out and about. And we'll continue to provide information for parents even over the summer. So, I'll be doing some newsletters, I'll be doing some notes for folks and to continue to provide information for everybody. We're also doing a number of activities, just so that everyone knows, aside from those information nights, we've been really involved in a lot of transitional kinds of activities for kids. So, in addition to the Pimp Pal lunch, we've done some fourth grade and fifth grade building walkthroughs. We've had some activities already with the kids. We're going to have some year-end sporting events, and the goal is to help the kids to meet each other, to get to know each other. So, the principals have been involved in those kinds of activities over the last couple of weeks. And we have an upcoming superintendent's conference day here in the last week of school. The goal is to continue to bring our staff together, to continue to talk before we leave, that we might plan and brainstorm before the year starts next school year. We're also completing some work here on our schedules. So, just to be clear, so we have now, pretty much, we know what we're doing in terms of schedules. And we've heard from some of our staff loud and clear through the listening and learning piece, that people are still, you know, even though we have our, our, our schedules for the next year or two, that people want to still make sure we keep the door open if there are other opportunities that are out there. So, what I have shared with the staff is that we will have a schedule in place for the next two years. However, we'll continue to keep our eyes open. So, we will go out, we'll look, we'll see what other people are doing, we'll give our schedule a little time to see how that works. And if there are things that we can tweak, if there are things that we need to do different, there are things that we need to consider, we'll do that over the next couple of years. And we have staff who've already said that they'd be interested in being a part of that process. We just kind of want to share that with everybody. And we're now working on making sure that people understand what they're going to be teaching for next year. Our goal is to provide as much information before the year ends. We have a consultant coming in also. We have a new system called School Tools that we've been using this year, and it's a little bit challenging when you're trying to get the schedules in. So, we have a consultant coming in to help us and to assist us from our bosies to make sure that we get all of that piece done before the year's out. I'm going to let Joe talk a little bit about just where we're at in terms of the schedules, the, the final piece here.
Sure. Thanks, Dr. Calvin. So, currently, what's going on in the buildings, we heard Pam talk a little bit about kindergarten screening. Kindergarten screening is really the first step towards student placement. In our elementary schools, K through four, they're working on building class rosters with student placement, very thoughtful student placement. They want balanced classes. We call those heterogeneously grouped classes where you have students of all different aptitudes and abilities and interests in, in each classroom. That's going on now. School Tool, that process with School Tool, that will lead to us, this will lead into some summer work with our counselors and administrative staff, making sure our courses are as balanced as possible, making sure they're taking care of what we call student conflicts, where students have a set of courses that they'd like to take, but there's some conflict in there and they can't get everything they need, so you need to move some things around. There's, as, as great as computers are, there's always hand scheduling that needs to occur and help us accommodate, meet the needs of all our kids.
Joe? How many days a week is the PE for, the specials for K to four?
Okay, so, we'll get right into it.
Oh, you get to have that?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
So, specials at the K four level are going to be forty-five minutes. There was some discussion about whether or not they would be forty minutes, but they will be forty-five minutes for art and music, which will each be once a week, and then phys ed, K four will be three days a week. All of our schedules, one of the things that we wanted to make sure is that we meet our state mandates. And in the area of phys ed, some we meet and in, in some cases exceed that, that mandate. So, I think you'll be pleased to know that. Computer and library will be once a week for forty minutes in each classroom. Literacy and numeracy are, have always been and will continue to be our primary concerns. And that's why we think it's important to call out the fact that we have an hour and twenty minutes daily of English Language Arts instruction and sixty minutes daily of math instruction. We don't want to forget social studies and science. We recommend that teachers meet on average every other day for at least forty-five minutes in those subject areas. Now, five, this, oops, five and six, sorry. So, so five, six, before I get into five, six, I'll talk five, twelve. So, one of the goals, one of the charges was to have a common schedule of five, twelve, so that we could share staff and have some consistency and have some fairness in the schedule. So, we are on a, what we call a three-by-four schedule. And that, what that means is that courses meet over a four-day rotation, they meet three times for fifty-five minutes. We had a lot of conversation with the high school, we reopened those discussions, we looked at things like advisory, could we fit it in? If we put advisory in, we looked at decreasing that fifty-five minute schedule to a fifty-one minute schedule to accommodate it. We also looked at some floating advisories. And I'll share with you what we came up with, which is what we shared with, with you guys this past winter, when, when I presented with the principals, and that's sticking with the three-by-four and fifty-five minute periods. I say that, and then I talk, I'll talk about five, six, because we really had to modify that for, for five, six. Literacy and numeracy at the elementary level, and that includes the upper elementary level, continues to be really important. Build those foundational skills so kids can be successful in, in all content areas. So, for ELA, they're going to meet six times, six, for six fifty-five minute periods every four days. In math, they're going to meet daily for fifty-five minutes. And then, for science and social studies, they'll meet in the three-by-four at the five, six level. Band and chorus are going to occur in the activity period. You heard some concern about sixth grade being outside of the school day. I think we've talked a lot about that. I think we feel confident that our band and chorus programs are strong enough and our kids are accustomed to doing that outside of the school day. We don't believe that that will create a hardship for that program, but we'll certainly watch those numbers, make sure that we're not losing kids because it's outside of the school day. Mrs. Armitage made sure that those things didn't conflict with things like intermurals. So, she put intermurals on the off day, so any students who want to be in band, chorus, and do intermurals, they could do that. We also have a, what we call a three o'clock bus, three to four o'clock, that's when our clubs are going to take place. So, kids really would have the opportunity to do all of that in, in this schedule. They wouldn't, there, there wouldn't be this choice, do I join a club, or do I do band, or do I do intermurals? Or, I think we're affording them, I know we're affording them all of those opportunities. Also, in there is an academic workshop, and there's an academic workshop five, eight, so I won't talk about it every single time, but the academic workshop's designed to, to both provide reteaching opportunities as well as enrichment opportunities. And I know Mrs. Armitage is looking forward to putting her leadership team in place and having conversations about just how that could look. She wants her input before she makes final decisions. That's five, six. In seven, eight, they're in a more of a traditional three-by-four, it's not as modified, but band and chorus are during the school day as, as they have been. In sixth grade, I didn't mention, but you might have noticed, we have health in a two-by-four, two days out of four, every four for fifty-five minutes. We also have that in seventh grade. That satisfies the state mandate. There was some concern shared before about not having health in eighth grade. And so, we talked to the health teachers actually in the middle school, because we could have, we looked at some different scenarios about how we could push health into eighth grade. What we would have had to do is for two years, have it be one day out of four, and then one year, have it be two out of four to meet the state mandate in the minutes. So, we posed that to them. They said they preferred to keep it consistent in a two-by-four in sixth and seventh grade. So, so that's what we're doing. Academic workshops are embedded. Also, we're looking to do an additional planning block. One of the things math has heard loud and clear was they were concerned, teachers were concerned that, that there's a lot of new things, switching from a, a longer block to a shorter block. Health is a good example. They were teaching health over three years, now they're doing it over two. They have as much time, because a fifty-five minute period is considerably longer than a forty-minute period, but making sure that teacher have, teachers have time to thoughtfully plan their instruction, want to give them one additional planning block in a four-day rotation for some of these transitional hardships they might face with all the change. So, you'll see that additional planning block in a one-by-four as, as we go into the high school, middle school schedules. Also, lab sciences, some of our kids take biology in eighth grade, that's a lab science, so they meet in a four-by-four setting. Finally, ninth grade, the biggest thing with, with the high school that we were able to do is that kids can take an additional course. So, they used to be able to take six courses, a lab science, and phys ed. Now, they can take seven courses, a lab science, and phys ed. So, kids can take an additional course. We know that there's a considerable number of kids who will, but there's also a larger number of students. but there's also a larger number of students who won't. So we're going to be creating learning labs. We're gonna, in speaking with Mr. Paul and some people on his team, they're interested in looking at how we can provide academic intervention for particularly our ninth grade students in a more structured setting. Not exactly like our, the way we do it now, but in a similar way, but scheduling kids in a thoughtful way into those study blocks, those learning labs, and those academic interventions. The other thing that we heard loudly was from our sciences. I met with the science department several times. They were advocating for our AP and Gemini sciences to be in a five by four. Of course, that started to flow into the region sciences being in a five by four. But we accommodate, we're gonna accommodate the APs for a few reasons. One, the AP exam happens quite early in the spring, so we lose a lot of instructional time before that AP exam. And we're taking the AP exam with other states that start their school year in August. So we wanted to be thoughtful about that. So we are gonna go ahead and do AP science in a five by four, and we're gonna do region sciences in a four by four. Going to a fifty-five minute schedule, the core area classes are pretty much exactly the same. They pick up five minutes in a four-day cycle. The science, the region sciences do lose some time. They lose, if we could've gotten the periods from fifty-five minutes to sixty minutes, they would've had exactly the same amount of time, but we were at fifty-five. So they lose basically five minutes a class is basically what they lose. But they do pick up in terms of frequency of meeting. They meet every day, four by four. Now they meet three out of four days. So they, they probably, they, they pick up twenty-five percent in terms of how many times they meet, and they lose about twenty minutes in a four-day cycle in terms of duration. And again, an additional planning block for the high school. So I know that was fast, but I just wanted to give you the highlights.
What about AP calculus and English? Are they getting extra instructional time as well?
They are not. It's, it's only the AP sciences that we're gonna do that for this year, but we are gonna keep an eye on that.
We will be monitoring closely how things go next year and as that committee comes back together to look at the schedule and see how things are working, we'll be working together. If there are things that we need to tweak, things we need to do a little bit differently, we'll put all considerations together and then we'll, we'll work, work right through it, basically.
I was gonna clarify that.
Go ahead.
Ron, that's because the core area classes are not losing any time. So they have exact, they, actually they have five more minutes in a, in a four block, in a four-day rotation than they do now, just to be.
And my guess would be that meeting three out of four times instead of the eighty-minute block, there'll be less time devoted to studying your homework in class. There'll be more actual instructional time.
Okay, all right. So just continuing to move forward, so that's where we're at in terms of schedules. Also wanna let you know that all of the necessary paperwork, whenever you're making a transition like we're making, there are some forms that need to be filled out with State Ed. And Kathy and I have been working very closely to make sure we got all those forms in. All forms have been filed with the State Ed Department. And we are now ready to move forward. Our next piece in the transition piece is around transportation. So Fred and Greg are here with us. The policy committee did meet. We heard a couple of things, we just wanna make sure everybody is aware. So we heard from the community that there's some things that they wanted us to slow down on and some things we will be slowing down on, some things we will be just moving kind of forward with. So the group stops will be different. So, excuse me, the group stops will be evaluated, I apologize. What we're going to do, we talked about group stops versus regular pickup at homes. We're gonna take a year to really look at that and study that and then come back with some recommendations. We don't wanna rush too fast with that. We already have some stops that are group stops and some stops that are door-to-door stops. So we're gonna take a year, study that, and then once we kind of seen, we got some more information, we'll come back and kind of go from there. And then in terms of the, some of the things, we're gonna slow some stuff down, we're gonna, but yet make some changes. So I'm gonna go over just some of the changes. So we have a new revised policy fifty-seven twenty. And we're just kinda gonna run down a couple of those things that are in red tonight. So first in terms of the, and Fred and Greg, please feel free to just interrupt me whenever you wish to. So first in terms of the bus stops and the routes. As we always do, we will establish those routes. And in the policy, it's just sharing that parents will be notified of the routes. We have a variety of ways that we do notify parents. We do it by US mail, by pickup, by electronic post. And if we do do those pieces by electronic post, we do, it is password encrypted there, basically. And so we just wanna kind of make sure that parents know that we will be using the following ways. There are some of our parents who we know don't have electronic resources, so we wanna make sure we offer it in a variety of ways. Second, in terms of the transportation to and from childcare locations. So what we're looking to do is definitely automatically, kids can be picked up from their residence. But also, per the policy committee, we'd like to make sure that kids have some alternatives. So in addition to, you know, your one major stop, there would be two additional stops that parents can have. And Carla, I know you had some language concerns or questions about that. You wanna share that now, and we can make sure that we put that in there for the board.
It's not so much related to the daycare as it is on the, on the very first page of that regulation, the fifty-seven twenty, it says all students will automatically be scheduled for transportation to and from their residence each year. And knowing that there'll be some resistance to, if my driveway and Jeremy's driveway are next to each other, I do not want that bus to stop at my house and then coast to his and the back end of the bus is still in front of my driveway. And I think by having that word residence, that leads people to think that it's gonna be at their particular residence every day.
That makes sense, makes sense. So we can change that language.
To stop or whatever. Students stop, not necessarily a residence. I know we're taking it a little bit slower with, you know, mass group stops and things like that, but this, you know, coasting to the next stop, I feel, and I think a lot of this board does too, that's over and above. The kids can walk next door, they can walk across the street.
So instead of residence, how about if we put to and from your assigned bus stop?
Whatever.
That works?
If it's residence, it's gonna lead people to think that the bus is gonna be right at my driveway.
Yep. So we can, we'll, we'll make that change, no problem. We can do that, for sure. Everybody in agreement with that tonight? All right. So we can definitely do that. And then there'll be two additional addresses that people can be picked up from. So we, we actually are giving them at least three, three choices for pickup and drop-off, basically. The one thing that we're asking people to do is that however they stay consistent, you know, it's very important that we be consistent, because sometimes we have people with a variety of different things going on. And in extremely many circumstances, we understand, but we're trying to really, we need to kind of bring some of this into alignment there. Also, we'll be asking people to bring in forms, turn those in to us, the date that school's use is July first. So this year will be a little bit different, because of course, we're doing some things right now, but that will be a policy by July first, turning in those forms. Also, in underneath that red, we have.
Can I just clarify something? Just for a little bit of clarification too, when you're talking about transportation to and from childcare locations or the two additional addresses that we're looking at, we're not saying that if like Monday and Wednesday they're at stop one, Tuesday they're at stop two, Wednesday they're at stop three, you know, and then back home or stop one again on Friday. That can happen, but it just needs to stay consistent week to week. It's not one address, one place, two addresses this week, then one address the following week. You can have the multiple places depending on what your needs are. It just needs to stay consistent on a week-to-week basis.
You got it. Right, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay. Then in terms of the non-public students, non-public students are afforded the same opportunities for transportation as all other students are. So they may be picked up from the residence or the nearest centralized pickup zone, just like all of our other students would be. If they're residing outside the fifteen mile eligibility limit by law, which is specified, they may have to be picked up from a centralized pickup point. So that's, that's there in the policy. Then in terms of non-public schools and holidays, so we will share our calendar with our non-public schools. And we just wanted to make clear in policy that, you know, if the district is not required to provide the transportation to non-public schools for general education students on days which the district is not in session. And that is, that's just law, basically. The, the other piece though, however, is, so if a student has been placed in a special education placement by, by our district and it's a non-public school, we do have to transport them. But if they're not placed by us, it's a parental placement, the district isn't required to provide that by law. So we just make sure that that information was in the policy. And then several pages back, transportation for students participating in extracurricular activities. We will provide transportation for kids, for, with a minimum of twenty students. After-school runs are assigned to an area, assigned to an area and do not follow predictable routes. Drop-off and directions travel are subject to change. So our after-school buses, late buses, sometimes those routes are changed. It depends on how many kids are on the bus. And sometimes kids aren't getting home at their regular time. So we just kinda wanna make sure parents know that. With regard to food on the bus, there would be no food consumption on the bus. And that's really important for safety reasons. So we have kids with a variety of allergies and we need to be careful with that on the bus, but also just safety. So I can recall a story very briefly where there was children, a child on the bus in a former district I worked at had a sucker. And the bus unfortunately had to hit on the brakes. And of course, you know, the sucker went down the throat. And so really, that's why we don't like food on buses, because quickly it can turn into a very unsafe situation. So that is in the policy. Also, medication on buses. So from time to time, we do have some parents who would like for us to transport their, their children's medications to school and give them to the nurse, or they'll put them in the kid's bag. So we have some kids who have an emergency care plan, that's different. But other than that, if they don't have that emergency care plan, parents are, our expectation from now on is that parents would need to bring those medications into school. We don't want medicines on buses and kids opening them up and things, you know, becoming a real challenge there. And then in the policy, the use of buses by community groups. So groups are allowed to use the buses, but they have to rent them, lease them, and they have to follow our procedures with regard to that. So we just put that also in the policy, okay? And aside from that, you know, we have, yes, did you have a question before we move on?
I have a question. When a community rents a bus, is it one of our bus drivers that drives it?
Yes, well, actually, the reason why that appears there, it was part of another policy, fifty-seven ten. When we sent it to the attorney, he recommended we get rid of that policy. So we just moved it over here. There's certain conditions. Our, our policy just mirrors law, State Ed law. And it has to be, there's only certain groups. So we can't rent one of our buses, say, the Boy Scouts. It has to be like, we kind of talk about Ontario, and we do for like Tom Lawler, and we do for some of their rec programs. But yes, it is our driver. We have to pay them and then we bill them.
Okay, thank you.
Carrie, did you have a question?
Just real quick too, just in case you get some questions in addition, as we talked about just different stops in different locations, 'cause Fred worked really hard and collected a lot of data, accurate data based on our ridership within the district to really come down with the number of stops that we needed to have additional for families. And one of the other things is that we know that there are some families who may have circumstances above and beyond what we're talking about. So just, you know, letting people who are watching this be aware, if you fall into some of those extenuating circumstances, just to directly contact transportation and to make sure, to work it out. We're not trying to make life difficult, we're just trying to make life consistent. And we know sometimes there are people who have circumstances beyond our school's current norm, so.
Absolutely. And when we get into the procedure, we'll, we'll talk about those extenuating circumstances.
Just, just to clarify, we're still doing a little bit extra that we don't need to be doing. All we're responsible for by law is school, home to school and school to home. And parents should have the responsibility. I know there's been some extreme situations, and you've heard one just recently. I mean, it's, if I'm having, my son's having a party, I don't expect the school to transport everybody to my son's house. I'll either go get them or their parents bring them. It shouldn't be expect the school to transport kids to a party or things like that, 'cause it creates a lot of extra work and it's a safety issue. And, you know, we should be responsible for our kids and what's going on.
Matt, did you have a question?
Yeah, back on the regulation for that, it says bus arrival, missed buses, and says the buses will not wait unless the student is at the stop or visible to the driver. I think it probably should be stopped, 'cause if they're, if they're visible, they don't have to wait.
Yes. You're talking about, so yeah, we'll go through that just, yes, okay. I know which one you're talking about.
All right.
Yep, okay. So we're gonna go right, right to that regulation now, and then we'll go right to that. Okay, we'll take that. So now, so this is the policy. Now we're gonna get into the actual procedure, the administrative procedure. We're gonna go right down.
I thought you already went through that.
That's okay. So here's the actual procedure now, we'll kind of go down. So first, in terms of drop-off and pickup, just so the parents know, again, just a mirror of what we've already shared and we'll make sure that that wording is correct that Carla has given to us. So again, your, your initial stop plus the two additional stops will be there. Rotating schedules that change from week to week and month to month, we would not be able to accommodate, accommodate those unless there is documentation of legal or extenuating circumstances that are involved. So sometimes we do have kids, there are some custodial issues, there is some homelessness kinds of things that might take place. So if there is an extenuating circumstance, someone's died in the family, something's, we will certainly work with those, those folks, basically. In terms of changes to, to scheduled transportation, so any change in the pickup, what we're gonna be, or drop-off, if there is a change that happens and people know about in advance, we're asking people to give us, you know, if you gotta change one of your three stops, give us at least a week advance notice, because we need to make sure we have enough kids on the bus, make sure we have things rooted the right way. So we're asking for that at least one week in advance notice. In the event of the extenuating circumstance, requiring a change to drop-off or pickup, an immediate change that is, we are asking people to contact the director of transportation or the building principals they currently are doing, to let them know, and then we can kind of go from there, basically.
Mathis, you're talking about though, with that, so changes to scheduled transportation one week in advance. It's not, I have a change just for next week. This is the eye of a change and moving forward, it's going to stay, because that would fall under a rotating schedule, okay?
In terms of transportation to childcare locations, so there are state regulations that actually we, that tells us where we can actually drop kids off at. So sometimes people want us to drop them off at, like you said, Boy Scouts or, you know, the dance studio, whatever else have you. Actually, by law, we're only, public transport, we have to take them to a childcare location, wherever the childcare location is, basically. And so we will be definitely following the law and providing to the locations where childcare is provided before and after school. So one of the things we're doing with some of those places that our kids may be used to going to is reaching out to like some of the dance studios and letting them know and trying to see if we can get parents to work together, do some carpools and whatever else have you, so that they can continue those great programs if their kids are taking, are taking part in after school. But really, we're supposed to be taking them to childcare locations by law. The law is listed there. So last-minute request would not, bus routes would not be able to change to accommodate last-minute childcare requests. However, in the case of an emergency, so if someone's stuck on the bridge or there's an accident, you know, those kinds of circumstances, they just need to call the transportation supervisor or the principal, and we'll work to make changes. And we wanna make sure that there's capacity on the bus to make those changes as well. Now, the bus pass system is, has been a lot of the talk over the last year. And that system, you know, what we're doing is we are basically saying we're not gonna be able to do that bus pass system anymore. So Tim kind of alluded to, just an example board, you know, just a week ago in one of our schools, we had a half-day of school. And between the hours of about nine forty till eleven fifteen, we had twenty-one parents call us and say, hey, we're gonna have something at our house. Can we have everybody just get on the bus and go over there? And we had to say to people, no, we couldn't accommodate that. It was twenty-one kids on a bus that was already filled. And that's an example of what's been happening throughout the district. You know, sometimes our parents, you know, I'm not saying they're trying to do anything to upset folks, but, you know, sometimes we don't get the calls until fifteen minutes. to upset folks, but, you know, sometimes we don't get the calls until 15 minutes before the day ends, and it's that last-minute shuffling that makes it pretty challenging for the Transportation Department. And we have to be careful also, as you've heard, we talked about the safety, because now the bus driver is managing children that they don't even, they're not familiar with, and that can cause some challenges too. So that system, we are in procedure here saying, we won't be able to do that. Now, if something comes up, that's an emergency, we would allow that, but it really truly needs to be an emergency or extenuating circumstance, and we would be working through that with parents. Now, the bus arrival and missed bus, so this is the part that, Matt, you were talking about. So our expectation is that all students would really, what we're looking for is to get all of our kids outside for three to five minutes. Now, the language, it says the buses will not wait unless the student is at the stop and are visible to the driver. So they'll pull up there, but they won't wait if the kid is not outside. So what we need is the parents to get the kids outside, you know, three to five minutes in advance. And I know sometimes in the winter, you know, it's snowing, and Johnny, you know, may not want to be out there, but we really need to get them out there. So the problem that we're having is, we got buses sometimes that are stopping here, then two doors up, and then three, and there's a load of cars behind them, and it causes frustration amongst our stakeholders in the community. So our goal is to get parents out there, get those kids out there. We're looking for them, get them out there at least three to five minutes in advance. Did that answer your question, Matt? I want to make sure the wording, was that what you're looking for?
Well, I was just looking at the word "wait." I mean, why would you wait if the kid's there?
Right.
Stop, I would think would be the proper word.
So we had, we had the word "stop," but we changed it. We thought maybe the word "stop" by saying, we won't stop at all. Sometimes Johnny may be just close to there, and we thought if we said we won't wait, that might be better than just, we'll just keep going if you're not there. Sometimes in the winter, we know it can be a little bit interesting, so we just thought we'd give us a little eayway to start with here, basically. Would that be okay to start out with, we're thinking?
I don't know. Because, you know, I'm behind a couple of Wayne Central buses now, and it is very frustrating, very frustrating to be behind them, when, you know, the kids are still at the table putting the last spoonful of cereal in their mouth, and they don't have their backpack on, and they don't have their coat, and the bus is there with the yellow, with the yellow, with the yellow, and I'm thinking, where the heck is this kid? And then finally, this girl strolls out of her house, walks probably 150 feet, and she's on her phone texting, like, there's nine cars behind me. I tell you, it was really very, had all I could do to keep my composure. But it should not be that. If your child is little, and you don't want to, then you get out there with your cup of coffee, and you wait with your child. We are not responsible till the child gets on the bus. So if you can't see your kid, if you can't get out there, and you can't see them when they're out there, you need to be out there. And this was a big thing with our community, with the closing of a building and the length of the bus rides. The length of the bus ride can be added 10, 15 minutes if we have to wait for every child to put their boots on, their coat on, and walk out the door.
So actually, I'm going to take ownership for that one word, "stop" versus "wait," because we had the word "stop" there, and I spoke to Fred and Greg, and we kept talking about that vocabulary, and I'm the one who said, maybe we should think about the word "wait." Greg, you want to say something?
Yeah, I think the intent with that is, Carla, if the kid's still putting cereal in their mouth, then the bus would slow down, they don't see any kid around, they would continue on. The intent of that is, you know, if the child is coming out of the house, you know, and coming down the driveway and is visible, that's why we use the word "wait" versus "stop," because, you know, I mean, if you get really technical, if we use the word "stop" and they're not at the bus stop, technically, we could drive on, and we thought that'd be a hardship, but your example of being at the kitchen table, they won't, I mean, you know, right, the bus will kind of slow down and just continue on. So that was the intent, that was the intent of going from "stop" to "wait," to just provide a little flexibility, but not to be unreasonable.
So maybe for the first year, let's see how, can we see how it goes with the "wait" piece, and then we kind of go from there. Would that be all right?
We understand your question, though.
Yes, and we, and it was there, that wording was there, but we just thought we would just try to, try the first. Yes, right. And then the last thing here on the procedure is just that, in the event of the student misses the bus, it really would be the parents or guardians' responsibility to bring them to school. So what we're, that practice of going out and grabbing, we just would not be doing that. If they're not there, they missed the bus, and dad would have to bring them to school. So we just put that in procedure as well. Okay, so with those procedures and those regulations, with the exception of that wording, board, if you were in agreement tonight, then what we'll do is we'll begin now to share this with our community, we'll be blessed, and we'll get it out there, we'll answer parents' questions, and we just want to make sure that people understand it and start moving forward with that.
My only question was, is there a place, I know it says at least one week in advance, but is there a place that gives our Transportation Department a sentence that says, Transportation Department has up to five days to initiate these changes, or something along those lines? Because if people are giving you, you know, the one week.
Yeah, on the application.
Says it on the form.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Okay, so, all right, I think we're good with the transportation piece. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you. Fred is heading out, so we appreciate, thank you for your time. All right, and so we do have also tonight for you, board, a, let's see here, I lost my place. Okay. We have a couple of things here. We have a memorandum of agreement for our building substitute teachers. So as you know, many of our districts around us are having difficulty with substitutes securing them, and we've created some building subpositions that we'd like to do. These are different from long-term subpositions, and these positions would not be a part of the WTA unit members, and they are, again, different from long-term subs, and we plan to advertise for these right away. Our goal is just to try to help us with some of the sub shortage in buildings, and so the daily sub rate is what they would be paid. What we're looking to do is guarantee them some time here in the district, and, you know, we had some people who unfortunately weren't able, weren't able to bring them back, but maybe this may be something that they might, may still keep them connected here with Wayne. But our big goal is to make sure that we get, help us with that whole sub coverage. So you have an MOA before you that we do seek approval for, actually, the MOA should say here on the screen tonight. And then, just in terms of the consent agenda, so we have a Wayne Finger Lakes BOSI's resolution tonight that we look for approval for, it's a BOSI's bid for Ontario, Seneca, Wayne, and Yates Counties. There is a memorandum, again, of agreement for the building subs. There's also a second memorandum of agreement for our CSEA unit that is in front of you tonight. We have a second reading of policy 5720 with those changes. And then also 5732 tonight, which just includes the video on buses, basically. The consent agenda is just the board minutes. We have some personnel pieces here. There's a speech job share, a long-term sub for speech teacher, an art increase of .3, a change of a leave of absence mentor, substitutes, and volunteer appointments as well. And then with the Board of Education 2017-18 meeting schedule, that is there tonight, we're looking for approval for that for our meeting. And then, there's some scholarships, one from the Women's Civics Club and the Wayne Wings Soccer Club for 500, the other for 250, which are gifts, and then our Treasurers' report, a budget transfer for 50,000, and then the physical education supplies, equipment bit. And that, with that said, that's all that I have for you all tonight. Any questions at all from the board?
I have a question on the job share. When we, when you have a .6 and a .4, a .6 gets benefits, and a .4 doesn't get benefits?
Uh, what? Go.
Or no?
One of the two gets it.
Yeah, so we don't have both, because it would cost us more to have a job share?
That's worked out in advance, but only one of the two employees would get the benefits.
And on that building subs, I know from past experience that teachers that do those positions do get a year of credit on their service, because they're in a teaching position, they work with kids, so that does help in that respect too.
Any questions at all? Okay, with that said, thank you, Greg, thank you, Joe. We're all set tonight. Thank you for your patience tonight. Question?
I'm thinking of a change, but I suggested on the transportation.
Oh, we can just, that's just a couple of words. We can, if the board is in agreement tonight, we can make those changes, and you'll be able to move on. We wouldn't have to come back unless you really want to.
Aren't we making the changes to the reg? We don't have to approve a reg, do we?
The reg, no, she made changes to the actual policy, just a couple of words on that policy. So, and there's, it's just a couple of words on, and it's actually going to be on the reg too. So we can, with those two words, we can just add that tonight, if the board is in agreement, and you would not have to come back and do another reading of that unless you want to. Okay?
All right, now the board will move through the action items listed on our agenda. Start off with, I need a motion to approve the Wayne Finger Lakes BOSI's Quaffter Bid Resolution. Matt, second. Ron, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. I need a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement for building substitute teachers. Carla, second. Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Need a motion to approve the second reading of policy 5720, transportation of students with the changes we had, and policy 5732, video cameras on school buses. Ron, second. Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And I need a motion for the approval of memorandum of agreement with CSEA. Pam, second. Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Carla, second. Ron, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Now we'll move on to committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report that we need to?
Senator, the Wellness Committee, just thanks to the Committee for Relay for Life on June 2nd, we raised over $3,800 for the event, for the American Cancer Society, and that concludes both policy and wellness for the rest of the year.
Thank you. And in order to speed eight to some conclusion of this meeting, I have no board president comments, and I need a motion for a German, Jeremy, and a second. Carrie, any discussion on that? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.